All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, January 7th, 2020 Board of Selectmen meeting. I'll read the agenda. Seven o'clock, we have citizens input. Seven oh five, Council on Aging and Human Services Advisory Board appointment. Seven ten, Foxborough Commission on Disability appointment. Seven fifteen, we have LLH, LLC, DBA, Trader Joe's, application for a change of manager. Seven twenty-five, we got Board of Selectmen Vision Statement. Seven forty-five, Selectmen update. Seven fifty-five, Town Managers update. And eight oh five, Assistant Town Managers update. And then we have a few action items. Bill, you want to lead us through the...
...the Board of Selectmen, citizens of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Anyone here for citizens input? We got our Council on Aging and Human Services, you're up.
Yeah, I think we have a little...
So I'm Millie Green, Chair of the Council on Aging Advisory Board, and this is Helen Olson, our Vice Chair. We're here to recommend that Betty Riley be appointed to fill the vacancy on our board. Betty regrets that she is unable to be here tonight due to health reasons. So we recommend Betty because she's an active participant and well-known at the senior center. We feel she will make a wonderful advocate for our seniors in our center.
Thanks again. So unfortunately, yeah, like you mentioned, she couldn't be here today, so we can't allot her with questions and...
Well, if you had a few questions, maybe we could answer.
Any questions from the board?
No, I'm good. It really recommends our...
Your money's good, right?
Your reputation...
We're good.
That's it?
Well, we...
Oh, anybody else? Okay, vote.
I make a motion to appoint Betty Riley to the Council on Aging and Human Services Advisory Board for term to expire on May 1st, 2020.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Tell her it was unanimous.
That's it?
Tell her it was unanimous.
You're good.
A unanimous vote.
Unanimous vote. That's a good one.
Yeah.
Next time it may not be so easy, though.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, can I see, we have the Foxborough Commission on Disability appointment, too?
Hi, my name is Susan Collins. I'm Chair of the Foxborough Commission on Disability, and we're honored to recommend that you appoint Robert Seitman to our Foxborough Commission on Disability. And I'll let, I think you all know Bob, if anybody goes into the orpheum, he's the first person you see, he's always there. So I'll let him tell you what his assets are to the commission.
Well, thank you. As a lot of you probably know, I lost my leg about eight years ago, and the first couple of years just trying to negotiate the public attitude toward people with, I won't call, say disability, differently abled. And then the physical barriers that I encountered to just getting around were things that really bothered me. And after a couple of years, I realized if I was going to live my life, I had to just learn to do things differently, which I've done. But I'm just hoping that, you know, maybe I can, you know, assist with making that easier with some others by being on the, you know, the Commission on Disability, and hopefully, you know, make a difference here in Foxborough. I've lived in Foxborough about 20 years. As Sue said, I am the Theater Manager and Technical Director at the Maryland Rodman Performing Arts Center now. Served previously in town on the Veteran Services Advisory Committee with Michael Johns. Served five years as Chair, six years on the committee. Was also the appointed Foxborough person on the, for the Crossroads Veteran Services District, the foretown Veteran Service District that was formed. So I sat on the Board of Directors representing Foxborough on that board for almost two years, I think it was, before the district ended up being disbanded. But, so I'm hoping that, you know, I can make, you know, now that I'm back and a lot more active, I'd like to get back involved in something again, and hopefully this is an area where I can make some, you know, some contributions.
Without a doubt. Any questions from the board? Great choice, and happy you agree to...
Thank you, Dave.
For all the work you've done in the past, and now going forward, too.
Good, thank you.
I make a motion to appoint Robert P. Seitman to the Foxborough Commission on Disability for a term to expire on May 1st, 2020.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I know Bob will be an asset to our commission and to the town, so thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, honey.
All right. We've got a application for change of manager. I guess you guys are both here, don't mind going up a little early? Good. Awesome. So go ahead and introduce yourselves and...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Andrew Upton for the Licensee. With me is William Walls, the proposed new manager of record on the liquor license at Trader Joe's. He has considerable experience. He has been a manager of record in Boston before, approved by the City of Boston and the ABCC. He has a great record, both in the sale and the supervision of the sale and service of alcohol. Has had no problems at previous stores. The company has a lot of faith in him and has promoted him to this location, so we're glad to answer any questions.
Great. Tell us a little bit about yourself, too. I know the attorney just said something, but are you just going to be the liquor manager or is it the store manager?
General manager of the Foxborough location. I've worked for Trader Joe's for 15 years, over 15 years, and have managed eight Trader Joe's locations, opened new locations, have been manager of record for alcohol licenses on two other locations, have never had an infraction.
Any questions from the board?
No, application is perfect.
Motion to approve the application for a change of manager for LLH, LLC, DBA, Trader Joe's number 528, from David Ford to William Thomas Walls.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, welcome, Foxborough.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Me, too. All right, so the Board of Selectmen Vision Statement, so Bill, you discussed it a couple of times previously, how you think it's important for us to have a vision statement, and you talked about it a little bit more, and then we'll...
Sure. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the, so let's talk a little bit about vision statement versus a mission statement, because I think sometimes the two become interchanged, and I think some folks think that, in some cases, some people believe a mission statement should come first, and then the vision statement comes next. But simply put, the way we have learned that what a vision statement is really about is the fact that it's what you aspire to be, essentially, what you would like the town to aspire to be in this case. The mission statement is what, is basically the method and means at which you get there. So the steps you would take to get us in that position, and what actions the town would take to put us in that position to achieve the vision of the town. So try and keep that in mind as you think about your discussion tonight, that it's important what you think is important for, as a vision statement for the community, what you believe it to be true, what you think would be the best vision for this community, and that it's something that, it's not etched in stone, it's something that, it's something we all aspire to. And once you aspire to it, then all of us can aspire to it as well. So that's why it's important, we think that you take that lead in that direction, and then we go from there. And so I think that's sort of the jumping off point, understand the difference between the two, and then look at it from, and then have the conversation about what you truly believe this community should be, would be, you envision the community to be, and what you aspire it to be.
And I think it's important to note that it changes...
Yes.
Over time.
Exactly right.
And it'll evolve over time.
Correct.
So, really, we come up with, you know, might have to change in a year, two years, three years, whatever. By no means is it etched in stone, and this is what this board, or the next board, or the following board is beholden to, so...
Exactly right.
The same thing with a mission statement, because your mission statement's got to reflect, it's the implementation piece of the vision statement, so...
So what's really important to bear in mind is why is it important to have this? It's because when we develop a budget document, the budget document should be reflect what the vision is. Should be a reflection of that. In other words, what we think, we should be spending the community's dollars and resources on services that you believe this community should have in place, and what are important to the quality of life, towards the reasons why people live in Foxborough. Why do people come to Foxborough? What's important in Foxborough? What are the things that drew you to come to Foxborough as a person, as a resident? What kinds of services do you like about Foxborough? It could range from anything from schools to public safety to recreation, to the overall quality of life. It could range from the fact that it's good family life here, there's, you know, it's a good place to raise a family. It could be that, you know, we offer great senior programs, we offer great recreation programs, we offer great opportunities for people to build a business, to do well economically. All those things that you would think are important for why a person wants to live in a community.
We started off with, you know, a suggestion from you. I think Dave's got one that maybe he should read and get a feel for. I think sometimes it's all the same idea, but how it's worded and the nuances might be a little different, so...
Once you read what we started off with, just so...
Sure.
Kind of see how it evolved.
While being responsible stewards of the financial resources of the community, the Board of Selectmen will work with a diverse group of residents, stakeholders, and businesses to establish the interests and needs of the community while ensuring that the safety of the public is maintained, and that the delivery of public services supports a high quality of life throughout the community.
So I was playing around with this and went through a couple of different drafts, and by no means is this, you know, perfect. It's just a stab at, kind of clean up from the discussion we had at the last meeting and, you know, kind of move the discussion forward. So I came up with, "The Board of Selectmen has a fiduciary responsibility to the community, and as such is committed to working with a diverse group of stakeholders made up of residents and business owners to establish and satisfy the needs of the community. The Board views public safety as priority one, and that the efficient delivery of public services will continue to support a high quality of life throughout the community." So, there's that.
Does anybody else have any thoughts about that? I mean, it's actually very similar to the one that was said earlier, but said in a different way, because the words were prioritized differently.
Right, because the first sentence is almost the same in the fact that, you know, the responsibility of financial or fiduciary, the responsibility of the community. And then I think, you know, the wording has just changed around a little bit, I think more specifically to what the needs are. I agree, Dave.
So if this is meant to be a vision statement for the Board of Selectmen, should we incorporate policies in there or anything like that?
Yeah.
Because there's nothing in there about setting policies and stuff like that, so
that's my only, I mean, tomato, tomato on the two of them, but I think, and the one that we have on board docs, you could kind of say, okay, well, policies might mean, you know, interest and needs of the community, but it really doesn't state it. So, I mean, I'm fine with either one of these, but I think we have to work the, you know, policy in there somewhere.
So here's just a thought, right, to, on your point, Chris, is that where it says, "While being responsible stewards of the financial resources of the community, the Board of Selectmen will work with a diverse group of residents, stakeholders, and businesses to establish policies that reflect the interests and needs of the community."
Well, besides, what did you say, establish?
To establish policies...
Yeah.
That reflect the interests and needs of the community.
I think we need more than just establish, maintain, review, update.
Establish, maintain, update.
And I don't want to get it too wordy, but...
Yeah. Establish and maintain.
Establish and maintain policies.
Right.
And you could say the same thing about the one that David had, you could put it in after...
Yeah.
Establish.
And maintain policies.
Right.
Either one. Maybe to satisfy the needs of the community.
Or that and...
Yeah, so...
That satisfies.
So the board has a fiduciary responsibility on the financial end, right?
Mm-hmm.
We have public safety responsibility, which is probably one of the most important. And then we have a responsibility to, to develop or establish policies and maintain policies for the benefit and the well-being of the community. So just have to come up with a way to kind of word that in.
Yeah.
And where does it go?
Yeah.
That was the concert. All been there, done that.
First one.
Riveting, that's the first. So we're up at, you know, talking about the vision statement.
Okay.
Dave came up with a draft, same idea, just different wording.
And then we're just kind of discussing adding policy into it somewhere. So we have a couple of choices. We can insert the policies and procedures on the first draft, what Bill suggested. On the second draft, we can just add that on to the end. You know, it's kind of like the, in the hierarchy, you know, the top three things that the board sees as its responsibility.
I like the second version, the way it's worded, "diverse group of stakeholders made up of residents and business owners." I just like the way that flows and that's worded versus the one in board docs. So you're saying, Dave, at the end, to bring up policies instead of putting...
Yeah, those would be like the three pillars of what we do, public safety, public service, and policies and procedures, right?
Right.
Think of all the other services the town provides.
Well, does public service include schools?
Could include schools, yeah. I mean, granted, the school committee has its own policy, its own vision statement, which would be reflective of education primarily, but if the Board of Selectmen supports good school systems, then financially, the town has to support that aspect as well. So think about that. I mean, that's, if in fact, that's part of the overall fiduciary responsibility...
Right.
To support services that add to the overall value of the experience here in Foxborough. How does that factor into that?
From a historical perspective, I think that's been where the attention and the funding has primarily gone, to the school systems, because they're producing results throughout the time that, you know, I'm back here in '77, in the hard times, you know, we still tried to fund them...
School system, yeah.
And let services within the town not get additional funding that they may or may not have really needed.
So think about that, Ed. What you're saying effectively is that's a value that this community embraces, strongly embraces.
And has for a long time.
Has for years.
Never had fees associated with playing sports or music or...
Bus.
Busing fees, parking fees. Every community around us has it. Foxborough's never had it, and I think Foxborough are very proud of not having any fees associated with any aspect of extracurricular activities.
I mean, is Foxborough, I'm asking you questions that you probably know the answers to these, but you got to say it, because you're not, it doesn't come to your mind unless you think about it. But, you know, what values, what values are most important to you as board members? For what's the services we provide? What do you think, I mean, obviously, a great school system, granted, you don't establish policy for the school system, but you support the school system, because without that support, they wouldn't, we wouldn't have a great, as great a school system. We, you support public works, providing safe and safe drinking water, and safe streets, and plowing the streets, and all the services that those departments provide. And of course, probably one of the number one things you do is support public safety. So...
That's all, it's all within the fiduciary responsibility, to make sure that the money is spent in the right way, with the town's best interest, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, we kind of, you know, we set the policies, but we rely on the town administration to implement those policies.
Correct.
So, you know, we want to try and keep this as, as narrow focused as possible in a general way.
Right.
You know, we don't want to grow into a three or four paragraph, you know, dossier.
But for the average person, I think the term fiduciary is fine, but you need to define it. What does that mean to you? So if the average person reads that, they say, what does that mean? The fiduciary responsibility of doing what?
Can I just throw out a couple of things just for...
Yeah.
Thought. Can I go home now?
No, of course you can't, no.
Of course, Mike. Just some thoughts, you know, as the chief policy board, some things to think about. You're, you're here to provide leadership for public service, which includes all those things, which the board, roads, public safety, et cetera, et cetera, for the kids to get to school, for, you know, for us to be able to have a democratic town. But public service, poliship, policy, responsible fiduciary leadership to provide for the high quality of life for the people who call this town. Something about that, I think there's something about quality of life is why people move here and stay here.
Mm-hmm.
So all those components, whatever components you cite, I think, need to support whatever quality of life the people aspire to.
I would say, kind of building on that, to me, the second sentence in the second draft, to me, it's more about quality of life than public safety. Like, I think, I think public safety is part of a quality of life that's kind of a bigger...
So it's public safety and delivery of public services. So it's twofold, it's not just public safety. So maybe word that a little differently.
Yeah.
But it wasn't meant to just be public safety.
Yeah, so the board views public safety and the efficient delivery of public services as priority, as top priority, and will continue to support, like something like that, just kind of rearrange.
Yep.
Then the only other thing I think is missing is just engaging the community. Like, to me, that's the one piece. Just like the schools that, you know, they have engaged students in theirs, I think ours is engaging the community.
Yeah.
Like, I think it's our job to kind of help educate and steward that information sharing and leadership and all that.
That's a great point. Because you're the chief leaders of that discussion.
Yeah.
And you need to be doing that. That's your role.
And we're always trying to think about how best to...
Engage.
Engage the community, share with the community whatever thoughts we have or policies we have.
Yeah, so that's the one piece that just struck me as something that could be, that maybe is missing somewhere, it's just maybe a word to not make it more lengthy, but...
I wonder, as you engage, however you word it, as you engage citizens, thinking back to the way you were talking about stakeholders, does that also include the rest of the stakeholders, such as businesses, such as the Chamber of Commerce, other folks that help us be the, you know, the community that we are?
Well, businesses are in there.
We should be engaging businesses, residents...
The community.
Yeah, the community.
You can insert it right there, I mean, I'm looking at the one that's online here, it's on, in front of me, but you could insert that, right, instead of, "We'll work," why don't you say, "We'll engage."
Yeah.
Right? We'll engage with a diverse group of residents, stakeholders, and business established, policies that reflect the interests and needs of the community. Policies and procedures that reflect the interests and needs of the community.
Same with Dave's draft, too, who was committed to engaging a diverse group of stakeholders made up of residents and business owners.
I don't have, I don't have, I don't have a choice either one.
Collect the reindicators. Too wordy.
Yeah, too many, too many words.
You're adding another word, but I see what you mean, being proactive. Well, I find it easier discussing this in a discussion. Personally, I found it hard to just look at this...
You can't.
In my office, by myself...
You can't.
And, because you just get too overwhelmed. I think this discussion is outstanding in the fact that now we're able to bounce things off and get ideas, and then work off of those ideas. So, you know, I don't think we're going to have a vision statement today, but I think definitely now that a lot of us are putting in ideas that are very similar...
But we're capturing all this information. We're going to come back with you with a revised version of this, reflecting this discussion tonight, and we'll continue to chop away at it. But I think you're getting close, you're getting very close.
I agree, because we're only talking of like two or three other items that we all agree need to be included.
So what about the Board of Selectmen will continue to provide leadership and engage the community to develop and maintain policies that are critical...
What's a good start?
I'm going somewhere, but I can't finish it.
Great start.
That was, that was, that was great.
I did write it down, I just have to think about how it should end, but I think that incorporates the leadership part that Mike suggested, and the engagement of the community that Leah suggested. Don't have to kind of play around with public services.
Yeah, so that, I mean, I think we're close.
So think about what you just said, Doc. It said, you, alone, it's hard to solve problems. Collectively, it's easy to solve problems, or to engage in this discussion. So that's why the conversation should reflect more input to solve issues. We're going through that in our budget process, right, Mike? I mean, we're going through a budget process, we're engaging, we're challenging the people who are coming into our means and asking for our money and saying, okay, how do you pay for it?
Getting them involved.
Getting, making them, help to solve the problem.
Yeah.
Because it's easy to just ask for something, it's a whole different thing to engage the discussion and say, okay, come up with... It's a whole different thing to engage the discussion and say, "Okay, come up with a solution." And by having the conversation, you know, having, the reason we want to have this conversation with you all is because, first of all, this should be your vision statement, not ours. And number two is that, is that if you truly believe it after we write it, that's how you'll reflect your engagement with the public.
Any other thoughts? Forward? All right, maybe we'll put that all together and bring it back in two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah?
Very good.
That'd be great, that was a great discussion.
Anybody have any further thoughts, just let us know, or send us an email. And we'll try and incorporate it, okay? Thank you.
All right, no, thank you. Selections update, anybody have anything? Okay. One, I just want to, I went to, represented the board at a Eagle Scout ceremony Saturday for Chris Anderson, who did a wonderful job achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, and the project he did was reconstructing and refurbishing the house over the dam down at the Lane property. And he did a phenomenal job down there, working with various members of the community. And it was great to be a part of that Eagle Scout ceremony. Those ceremonies are very cool when you really sit back and listen, you know, for the young Christian to have achieved that level. I mean, Chris saw it a bunch of times with your boys and being a, you were a troop leader, too, right?
Yeah.
For me, it was only my second time going to one. It's very interesting, very cool.
Yeah, it is. It's being, and Mike attests to this, being a troop leader and you see these kids when they come in and they're in, you know, kindergarten, and then you see them standing there on the altar where Chris was on Saturday. I mean, I wasn't there, but I've been to a million of them there, so it's quite an achievement. And very few scouts make it to Eagles, so it's definitely quite an achievement.
So, congratulations to Chris and his, to his family, too. The other thing I want to bring up is, in the January twenty-fifth MIA annual meeting, our esteemed town manager, Bill, is going to be running for, what's the position?
Member of the board of directors.
Member of the board of directors.
I'm actually, I'm a sitting member of the board now, but there's another seat that, it's a seat I currently serve on, but I'm up for renewal.
Renewal.
Yeah.
And so, do you plan on going to that? Do you know where? Right now, we're not sure if anybody's going to be able to go. Any board of selectmen that goes can cast a vote for the, for the members. If the chair can't go, then I could, if anybody else can go, you know, then I'll, you'll be, there's a form in here that I can fill out that you can represent the town and do the vote. If, if none of the board of selectmen can go, I can have our town manager vote, but unfortunately, he's running.
I don't want to vote myself.
So, we can't do that. Were you, did you, were you able to look into if the assistant town manager can vote?
We believe that can be done.
Okay.
I don't think that'll be an issue.
So, I think the first thing we'll do is just maybe see if, I'm on the fence if I can go or not, so is Ed. Maybe in the next week or two, we'll finalize that. If we can't, then I'll fill out the forms to have. You're going to, you're going to go anyway, Mike?
Yeah, we're, actually, the three of us are going to be there.
Okay.
What I would request is if you're going to designate in writing that I can cast this vote, tell me what the vote will be.
Oh, absolutely not.
This isn't my vote, this is the board of selectmen's vote.
Correct.
So, vote, make a decision.
That's a very good point.
Yeah, happy to vote, but it's on your behalf.
Yeah, right, right. And who do you want to vote for?
We let you pick it, Mike.
And no dinners involved afterwards.
Just to add to this discussion, actually, we're being recognized on two levels at this meeting. A third, if you include the election, but, but the second one is the fact we've receiving award for the most improved wellness program in all of the MIA programs. And the second one is the fact that they're recognizing Barbara Kelly as one of the most, was it the top risk, risk?
So, we have a program, there's two programs we run to minimize risk. One is our wellness program, and that's risk to, of our employee health. And then the other one is the loss control program.
Loss control, yeah.
And that's loss of either injury, loss of building vehicles, all those things that we, that we do. And Barbara Kelly, who's works over at the Department of Public Works, she's recently been promoted to, from coordinator to administrator, she runs this program on a volunteer basis. This is in addition to her, to her paid duties. And she does an outstanding job, and she's being recognized throughout MIA, across the state, as the number-one program and number-one program coordinator. So, we're really, really proud of that, Kelly.
That's great.
So, we've invited her to come as well. And Chris Gallagher will be there as well, so...
Does all of this stuff take place in one of the days?
Yeah, it takes on, it's on Saturday, and it's a luncheon that'll be held at the Heinz Auditorium on Saturday at noon time, from twelve to about two.
Okay.
So, and there's a luncheon that goes with it, so...
That's for this awarding.
That's for this award and the election and then the...
Oh, will the election be during the luncheon?
Yeah, they do, they hold, it's a business meeting that they have at the luncheon. They lie to eat, and then they have a business meeting, and then they do the awards afterwards.
Awards and nominations of...
Nominations will be done before the, I think, before the awards, but...
Okay.
I got to just check my work calendar, I might be able to go.
Good. Well, you're all, you're all welcome to come. I mean, there's no, so don't, any one of you can come, or all of you collectively, if you want to come.
Okay.
And if you, that are interested, if you could just send an email to either Bill or to Pam, and Pam will get you registered for the luncheon. You know, MIA pays for the luncheon, recognizing its members and doing the voting and stuff, but let us know, and we'll get you registered to go.
Okay. Great. Anything else?
Just one last thing. Just congratulations and thanks to the Patriots for a good year, but not a great year, but a good year.
About one playoff game. Bill?
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, yeah, I second that motion. It's been a great year, but not, not one that's always reflective of what they do here. We're so used to, I think we've been spoiled over the years with such, so many great championships. And it's still a championship caliber program and, and it always remained that way under the current ownership and, and the current coaching staff and the, and the players that are there. So, we hope it'll always continue to be that way. So, we, I also want to just take note of the fact that there is, there is an international conflict going on right now, and they, there's something going on, going on in Iraq right now, which is concerning, of course, on many different levels, but certainly, we want to, you know, send our thoughts and prayers to the families of the, of those service members that are, that are there, and to the families of those who are serving at this point in time, and hope that they stay out of harm's way. But they are doing a service to us as a nation, but certainly, providing, putting themselves in the middle of a conflict, which is going to be difficult at best to resolve. So, we hope it can be resolved soon and quick, and hope that the both sides manage to figure out their differences and get the thing straightened out quickly. We, some good news to report is that we did receive some additional Chapter Ninety funds this week. We're notified by the governor's office that we're going to receive another, close to sixty-five thousand dollars in, in Chapter Ninety money, which you can use to fix roads and to do public works projects here in the town. And that money is available to us now. There is, we are in the middle of the budget process, as I noted earlier. We finished, I think, all of our internal hearings today, and then we're now, tomorrow, on Monday, I'll be sitting down with, with George and Marie to sit down and figure out the final recommendations that I want to make to the board on terms of the budget process. So, where we are, I think we're going to be fine. We'll work out, there are a few challenges to figure out, but we'll get there. And I want to commend all the departments for pretty much following the recommendations that we had and trying to keep the budgets, you know, at a manageable level. And we weren't able to achieve that in all cases, but certainly, they've done a great job with, with doing that, doing the process, the recommendations, submissions that they The MMA meeting, as noted, will be at the end of the month, and that's going to be on the twenty-third through the twenty-fourth, and it'll be in Boston at the Heinz Auditorium. And that includes the MIA meeting as well, so we just want to, as a follow-up to that earlier notion, there's also the, that same day on Saturday is the MMA annual meeting, which will be the annual business meeting, which will be held in the morning prior to the, at the MIA luncheon. Board members are certainly welcome to attend that as well. Governor Baker is expected to be the speaker at this particular board meeting, which is something that he typically does, does the day before, but I guess due to schedule conflict, he'll be, he'll be there on Saturday morning instead. The year-end review process that we've talked to Christina about will be starting up fairly soon, and then we'll be collecting pictures, and if anybody on the board has particular ideas or thoughts that we'd like to, you'd like to see included in the year-end review, sort of tradition we started a few years ago, and people do enjoy seeing that. So, we're going to try and stay with that tradition and work with cable, the local cable, Fox, Foxborough cable access to try and pull that together. They have a lot of information, but also, they have a lot of, we want, but that should be reflective of what we think is good, of what happened during the past year. So, feel free to send your thoughts along on that. Annual reports will be due coming, going out fairly soon. We finished the calendar year, and the annual reports are based on the calendar year, not a fiscal year, so we'll be getting that information. We'll be requesting those fairly soon for people. We'd like to get those in by February, so we can have them ready for the annual meeting. Legislation for the stadium license was supported by Governor Baker, and he has filed a bill to have that approved. So, waiting to see how that makes its way through the legislature, but appreciative of the governor's office for supporting that and making sure that happens.
That was actually a story in the Taunton Gazette.
Was it?
Yeah, read it at work the other day, so...
Good, good to see that. And don't forget to, everybody, anybody can make it, the borough groundbreaking will be on Thursday at eleven a.m. is the date and time. So, we want to, if anybody can make it, I incredibly won't be able to, and I have to attend a funeral of a very close friend that I grew up with, so I'll be, I'll be attending that in the morning, but Mike will be tending on my behalf. I will make it back in the afternoon, though, to attend the grant, presentation of the grant award for the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars roughly for the Housing Choice Grant that we'll be receiving in Brockton, the city of Brockton. I believe the lieutenant governor or the governor will be there to present those awards. So, we'll be there to receive that as well.
Yeah, I think the invitation said the lieutenant governor will be there.
Most likely, yeah. All right, so those are my updates, and I want to say happy new year to everyone, and may this year be as great as all the rest of them.
Thank you. Mike?
So, I just have three quick updates. The first one is the ongoing recruitments, that we have two of them. One is for our new town engineer, and the second one is for our executive assistant. Both of those are posted on the website, and those are open until January twentieth, and then we'll start our process of screening and interviewing to fill those two positions. So, the executive assistant, Pam Riccio, she, this is her last week with us. Fortunately, we're able to keep her here in the town of Foxborough, where she has, is transitioning over to the position that Christina just left.
So, we're playing dominoes here.
Yeah. So, it's, that kind of says a few things about the town, that we, that we have people that want to grow and learn new skills, but they want to stay here in the town of Foxborough. So, we've, we experienced that last year, where we had two employees, you know, swap ends of the hall here in Town Hall, and they've grown new skills, very happy, you know, in their new challenges, and we're finding the same with Christina, and I'm sure Pam will find the same enrichment and success over in the library, supporting as they're basically the business manager. That's not the title of the job, but that's, that's what happens there.
If I could just say something, and I was going to actually say this in a couple weeks, but since you raised it, I just want to say thanks to Pam for all the work that she did and helped us in the organization. She did a terrific job with our licensing. I mean, she makes it virtually simple for all of us to work through the licensing process, which is not that easy to do, believe me. It's a very complicated, very detailed process. She understands the law, has really spent a lot of time and effort in that aspect of her job, and, and there are so many other things that you just don't see here, but are done on a daily basis in the office, and I'm really, truly grateful, as Mike is and all of us are, for the work that she's done, and I wish her the very best in her new role in the library.
My last update is regarding vision statements. And so, you all understand the importance of vision statements, you know, before we step into our mission statements. And with that in mind, Bill and I have charged the department heads to work on theirs, which they are currently doing. So, they're working with their staffs, looking at what they do, what's, what's important in the, in the delivery of services, and how at a higher level do they meet the needs of the community. And they won't be finalizing their, their vision statements until you do yours, because theirs have to, you know, come, come within the administrations, which comes within yours. So, you are actually setting the umbrella for the town of vision statements, so we'll see these different puzzle pieces come together. So, it's really a parallel process, and you're taking the leadership for the town on this, but do know that the, that the departments as a whole are going through the same thing and look forward to your leadership as they bring the pieces together to provide public service.
Thank you, Mike. All right, we've got a few action items. I think we can handle it. Item one is a motion to accept a gift donation of twenty-five dollars to the Veteran Services Department from Kevin E. and Kimberly, and Kimberly C. Leiden in memory of Anthony Maderas.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Motion to accept a gift donation of twenty-five dollars to the Veteran Services Department from the Three T Legacy Trust in memory of Anthony Maderas.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion to accept a gift donation of fifteen hundred dollars to the Foxborough Fire Rescue from Dunkin' Donuts of Foxborough.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Motion to accept a gift donation of fifty-three dollars to the Foxborough Fire and Rescue from Stop and Shop Community Bag Program.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Motion to accept a gift donation of a hundred dollars to the Council on Aging Human Services from Charlotte Altman.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion to approve CBS Scene DBA Sporting Club for an extension of business hours to permit food service until two a.m. on January eighteenth, February eighth, March seventh, and April eighteenth of this year.
Second.
No further discussion. Do we know why they want the...
Ultimate fighting.
Yeah, UFC.
Oh, okay. All right. What it is about? UFC fighting.
UFC.
But they understand alcohol.
No more alcohol after twelve-thirty. No more. Service is what, twenty, his last service is twelve-thirty, right?
Well, they can till one on licenses.
They can still, people can still drink it till one, but they can last call for services, I think, twelve-thirty.
Twelve-thirty.
I feel like they request this, for this UFC thing, for the first time.
They've done it before, I think you're right.
This should be, yeah, they should understand all this, right?
Yeah.
They do, yeah.
Any other further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Motion to approve tuition reimbursement in the amount of eighteen hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty cents to Officer Scott Dion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Good night, everybody. Happy new year.